Sure.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and start. Ms. Couch, you wanna do the invocation, then we do the pledge of allegiance.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, under the chairman's report, we've started having department head reports. This month, it's the fire and EMA. It's Fire Chief Drew Baker. Can give us an update on the fire department?
Yeah, so this update's gonna be from December of 2022, when I first was able to come onboard as the fire chief. So, as a department, we've implemented our five-year strategic plan. This has kinda been our roadmap to kinda help us be progressive with the things that we're doing. During this timeframe, we've been able to purchase new radios. We've been able to purchase two new fire trucks. And we've got a replacement plan in place to purchase one truck a year. And that's really just to keep our trucks below that fifteen years that is recommended by NFPA. We've also been able to purchase two side-by-sides. With those side-by-sides, we've purchased some mini pumps. Those mini pumps will assist us with wildland fires and things like that, that we've been dealing with here in the county. And they'll also have spots for us to have patience to where we can treat them if we find them off in the woods or anything like that. We've been able to purchase four new SUVs. So, we purchased three Explorers and then one Tahoe. The goal of those is to put them in service and allow us to have some quick-response vehicles throughout the county to where we're not wearing, tearing these big fire trucks. We've replaced a lot of fire hoses, nozzles. A lot of the stuff that was twenty years old, we've been able to replace. We've purchased a fit test machine that allows us to be in compliance with NFPA, with our facepieces, to ensure that our guys have the proper fit facepieces for when they go into fight fires. We've been able to purchase a new SEBA filling station. So, the one that we had was twenty-plus years old. So, we've been able to replace that. And that's just an NFPA requirement that allows our individuals to have what we call good air to put into our cylinders. We've been able to replace a set of our extrication equipment. So, we've gotten probably the best stuff there is to get. It's hydraulic, so instead of having to run hoses and things like that off the truck, the guys can just pick up these tools and go straight to work. We've also implemented a career matrix. Within this career matrix, it just gives a roadmap for the firefighters all the way up to my rank as to what certification classes they need to obtain. And it keeps them on a path. There are incentives with it, so it's also increased our retention within the fire department. We've also been able to conduct a numerous amount of in-house classes. These classes that we've been conducting are actually certified by the National Pro Board. We've been able to teach classes from Fire Instructor One, Fire Instructor Two, the Fire Officer Series, which goes all the way from a lieutenant, which is a first-line supervisor, all the way up to Chief Officer level, which is a Fire Officer Four. We've done a Fire and Life Safety Educator. One of our big goals is prevention. That's a big thing that I'm trying to push. As some of the business owners may have seen, we're getting out and checking facilities. We're trying to get out in the schools, educate the kids and things like that. So, that was just a class to help our personnel understand their role in the community. The gentlemen back here, they are actually in a two-week hazmat tech class. That is an eighty-hour course. And at the end of that, they'll gain an MPQ certification as a hazardous material technician. So, we are a part of a regional hazmat team. And this will allow us to assist Carrollton and Carroll County moving forward. So, altogether, since 2022, we've been able to now thirteen MPQ classes that we've been able to do. And y'all bear with me, I got a lot to go through. We have introduced in-house EMT basic classes, as well as advanced EMT classes. These classes allow our personnel and outside people to gain their certification to the national registry level, which will in turn allow them to get their state license. This has been something that's been beneficial to us. We've been able to run three EMT classes. We have one ending this month and another one starting in June. And then a second advanced EMT class that is gonna be starting in August. There's four various levels to EMS. EMR, which is just the lowest level you can get to. And then EMT basic, which is the second step. And we're hitting the third step with the advanced EMT. So, we are trying to ensure that we, as the firefighters responding, you are receiving the best training that we can and that we're working our way up to where we're providing a better level of care for EMS. So, as we stand, we have twenty EMT basics within our department, seven advanced EMTs, and three paramedics. So, we're making the right strides. All of these classes that we do have not only benefited our department, but we have had individuals from Carroll County, Carrollton, Bremen, Paulden, people as far as La Grange and Columbus coming to our classes here in our county. So, it's been a benefit for us. Our training division has conducted two basic firefighter courses within our county. This has allowed us to actually certify our individuals to the state firefighter level. Our staffing, I'm happy to say that we only have one opening right now, and hopefully we fill it tomorrow. When I first got here, we had twelve to fourteen, somewhere around there. And we were primarily a second department. So, we have implemented a forty-eight ninety-six schedule. With this forty-eight ninety-six schedule, it has allowed us to be a primary department. So, the firefighters that you see on duty, outside of a few part-timers that we still have, those are strictly primarily for Harlson County. So, in the event that we have something big, we have a pretty good roster to call individuals back to assist us. That forty-eight ninety-six, we're one of very few within the state. So, we're kind of on the front line of the new schedule. And we're seeing big benefits with it. Moving forward, some of the goals that we have within this five-year plan is to use some SPOS funding to build us a burn building. Within the state of Georgia, we're required to do annual fire training. And right now, we just don't have the facilities. But I feel strongly that with SPOS funding, we'll be able to make this happen in the near future. We're also hoping to be able to purchase another truck this year, just to stay on track with that one-year replacement plan. We've also got a plan in place to replace some of our outdated and worn gear that our firefighters wear, and also get them on a rotation of where we're staying within NFPA requirements. Also, we're looking at hopefully hiring additional personnel in the future to where we can try to meet the NFPA and ISO standards that are required of us. But really, all I can say is thank y'all. I don't think there's been anything that I've truly needed that y'all have denied. So, it's really been a huge blessing to our department. And it's really helped my guys. We're moving forward, and we really, really appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief.
Has anybody got any questions? Okay.
How long you been in office?
Since December twenty-two.
First year, you come in under budget or over budget?
That first year wasn't my budget all the way. But it was, we were over on overtime and stuff. And that was just from being short. And then the fire truck maintenance, that's where we go over a lot. And that's where we're gonna go over this year as well. Until we get these trucks squared away, that's where we're gonna be at.
Alright, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
The two newest fire trucks sitting out front?
Oh, yeah, we do have the two newest trucks out front for y'all to look at. Actually, the newest one we got, Fairfield Plantation, they're actually coming out tomorrow, their fire department, they wanna look at it. It's a big, beautiful truck, so we brought them up here. Hopefully, y'all go out there and take a look at them. Oh, we can?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Do you want to know how much a total setup for a plenty of firemen cost all the year?
Yeah, so thirty-two fifty is a rough number now.
That's permanent?
Yeah, that's per individual, that's boots, trousers, coat. We try to get five years, but it's just, it's hard. It's hard to get that amount. Nothing's made like it wants, where everything's cheaper. Material, it costs more, but it's cheaper material. I don't know how it works, math ain't mathin', but that's how it is.
Okay. Moving on, the approval of the previous minutes. Everybody's had the opportunity to look at those minutes.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve, all in favor, show a right hand. Approval of the agenda. Everybody's had the opportunity to look at this agenda. Is anything you would like to add or take away?
I would like for us, if we could, hold off on, I'm looking for the number on it. The planning, zoning, board appointment, does that run out at the end of June?
Yeah, that's the end of June.
So, we got one more meeting?
We got one more regular meeting.
I would like to table it till June then, please, sir.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion now, well, is there anything else? I need approval to approve the...
I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, show a right hand. Okay. Public participation on agenda items?
Mr. Dewberry?
Okay. Come on up, Mr. Dewberry. Yes, sir.
Well, I'll tell you one thing. I'm behind a little bit. If y'all had any trouble with the mail, I ain't got my gateway in one month. I ain't had it yet. So, I don't know much to tell you. But I did find out today, and I've been asking before today, when I went to vote, that a person that's got a position here does not have to give up his position to run for another office. Why is that like it? I always considered, like, if I was gonna run for something, I'd have to give up the office I'm in and run for the next office that I wanted to try to win. Is that not the case here?
Well, if their term is gonna run out at the same time that the one that they're running for is gonna start, then they're actually not, they're not overlapping the terms. One stops and one ends.
Well, I'll bring this up now, y'all. I know all y'all watching news. It's getting just like Biden and Trump now, you working, trying to slant each other. And I don't think y'all do that. I think if you wanna run a position, give up the one you want again, and seek your one that you're after. What's he got to lose if he don't give up in there? What's he got to lose if he don't win it?
The Secretary of State...
He's out of office.
The Secretary of State's what implements the laws for the election. And we don't have any part of that, all we do is get to pay for it.
Well, I asked him today, then, when I went to vote. He said, as far as any one of those county ordinance or law, anything that you had to give up your position to run for another one.
It's not the state's one that sets the rules on the election.
And it's also part of the Constitution under Article Five that allows you to do such.
Well, I'm just now finding out about it. I think some of the citizens ought to be trying to do something with it. And another thing that's happening in this county is people that stay here and retire now, congratulating for that. But when they get retired, then they want to turn around and seek that office again. What is it? It must be something to do with the money, retirement and going back at the same job and getting paid for that. I don't know, I'm not smart enough to figure all that out. But there's something going on there between that. That don't, it don't sound like it's constitutional to me.
Well, the ACCD kinda encourages that. You know, with the labor shortage that they are now, government has a hard time finding help. And people still want to retire. But you've got a labor pool of retired people that you don't have to train. They're ready to go to work the next day. But they also wanna retire. And they've earned what they've paid in is for retirement, and they wanna start collecting it. But, you know, it's a benefit in some ways if you hire those retired people. Because they don't, you don't have to add money to their retirement anymore. They're just straight time. It's, and they're trained people.
But it never getting any better than if you train somebody else to take their position. If they say they have another three or four years, you gonna have the same problem at the end of them year, you ain't got nobody to pick up their slack on their job.
Hopefully, the labor force will get better in the next three or four years. You know, I can remember when...
I hope it would too, but in this past year, it ain't got better.
But this is the last, just the last three or four years. Before that, you know, people wanted jobs.
You can even hire a guy now to help you weed eat, cut down liams or anything.
That's right.
I just tell you, be frank about it. The government's got a lot to do with that. They put these people on paychecks and they don't work. I could get into that and stay in here about a week, but I won't.
I could too, but we don't have any control over that.
That just burns me up now here. At my age, I've worked all my life, and my daddy raised thirteen children. He's never had a handout in his entire life. Whatever we wanted, we had to work for it. And that's the way it should be now, I think.
I agree.
Give these kids some time to... Well, my daddy used to say, "Alamine is the devil's workshop." So, put them busy doing something.
Yeah, that's right.
But you take them now, you know, we've had a lot of this stuff on television about university and all. But children now don't even know who has succeeded the president and something happened to him, who would take over for Speaker of the House, whether to die or get killed or something like that. They don't know anything about the government. And it's ridiculous, breaks my heart. But anyway, I won't take up all your time.
Anytime. Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Okay. Item number one is public hearing rezoning request. Harlson County Tax Map zero-zero-four-eight-dash-zero-zero-zero-five, located at one-twelve Beach Creek Road. Present zoning is A-one. Requested zoning is twenty-five acres, conditional use for an event venue. Requested by Rafael Salva Fredo, pretty close. Okay. You wanna get up and tell us what you're wanting to do?
Okay, hello and good afternoon to everybody. I am Rodolfo Prado Jr., and these are my parents, Rodolfo Prado and Rosalvo Prado. So, our property is located at one-twelve Beach Creek Road. We purchased the property in 2016. And ever since then, my parents have loved the area, and they decided to build a five-thousand-square-foot building on the property that we would like to use for a venue for events, events such as parties, weddings, and fundraisers. We would not be using the entire property, only twenty-five acres to host these events. My parents have been in the restaurant business for twenty-five years plus in Mableton, Georgia. And they're looking to focus on something new here in Talapooza. And for the past eight years, we've been working hard on the property to accomplish this.
Oh, I've got a question. There's a fifty-acre tract. And you wanting to re... Fifty-five and rezone twenty-five. But you don't have it laid off where that twenty-five is located. I got a problem with that.
We haven't had time to get somebody to do it, but we were looking to do it. We actually tried to make one ourselves. But if you guys would like to give us another chance, we'll find somebody to go out and give us exact numbers on the measurements.
I'm just one vote. But it would be beneficial if I knew where this property was at. I'm not gonna vote to rezone some property that I don't know where it's located. So, if you would like to... And you might wanna go ahead. The other four may see it different.
I'd like to add to what you're saying, though. On that twenty-five, if you're gonna have other plans for other buildings, possibly, they need to be spotted on there. And I guess my question is, you got an event center. How many people do you think that building would hold? Would be fire?
A hundred.
A hundred. So, is the acreage that you wanting to rezone needed for parking, or what?
Yeah, yeah, parking is included.
Okay.
I think you'd be better off to withdraw tonight and designate where this twenty-five acres is located on the property. Because just rezoning twenty-five acres is part somewhere out there in that fifty-five.
If you can have a smaller drawing, draw it up to where you can actually show us what your plans is there.
I have something here that maybe, I don't know if you wanna look at?
We can, but we really need to have it resubmitted, though. And then lay out a plan of what, you know, other than just a picture of the building and what you want to do.
We ain't gotta go back through the whole process.
Yeah, you don't have to go through the...
You just need to show us for sure where this is gonna be.
Yeah. Yeah, even if you wanna, you know, take a plat and draw it out, at least we'll know what your plans is and what partial of the twenty-five acres that you're wanting to rezone.
And I know this question come up at the zoning board meeting, you know? They said that it didn't matter to them where the twenty-five acres. But they're just a recommend board. I think you might wanna tell us where it's at.
What, I mean, obviously, the venue's only five thousand square feet. But what do y'all intend on doing on the other twenty-four acres that the building's not sitting on?
Well, my father, just for personal use. Yeah, he has.
Yeah, in the building, I want to put in a green area.
Okay.
Okay. Well, come on up to the microphone, we're streaming and they can't hear you.
Good, you're good.
In Mableton, we have a grocery store. And we support to the school, the public school. And right here, I want to, if one day some people coming to help to the public school, if you decide to give me a permit for making the building, the zoning, and we try to work it out. Yeah, I gotta, see, I have my English not so good, and I gotta put in everything. That's why I bring my son. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But you said early on that you intended to rent part of it all out? What?
No, it's basically just personal use, the rest of the...
Just personal use, okay.
Yeah, we have ATVs that we ride around the area, so probably just for that.
Oh, okay. Okay. But, you know, if you'd like to re... Bring it up at a later date with a drawing of where this twenty-five acres is located, now's the time. Or if you want to move forward, we can do that too. But my advice would be to redraw this.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number two, we deleted. Item number three is Regional One EMS Board Appointment. At this time, I would like to nominate Chief Drew Baker to this position. It's a three-year term, right?
Yes. Ending June thirtieth, 2027.
We've got two appointments. One, I think, is Mitch Golden. And the chief, I'd like to see him, and the other is emergency management.
I'll second that.
Okay, we've got any discussion? We got a motion and a second, all in favor, show a right hand. Okay, motion carried. Item number four, GDOT update drug and alcohol testing policy. That's the one that Ms. Couch explained to us at the work session. It's just an update on our transit drivers. Do you have any questions of this? Okay, then I need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the drug and alcohol testing policy.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second, all in favor, show a right hand. Motion carried. Item number five is Automatic Aid Agreement for Fire and Emergency Services with the City of Bremen. This is just an update where Bremen is automatically updating Harlson County Fire at certain streets. It kinda gives us... What this involves is that certain areas in the city of, around the city of Bremen, that they will come to a fire, they'll automatically come to a fire. When our truck gets there, they'll be on the way to. Chief, you wanna explain it? You can probably explain it better than I can.
So, really, it's just us sharing resources. So, a lot of the areas around Bremen, they're coming out two and a half miles with their ladder truck, and then up to five miles with an engine company. So, it just, it provides us some more manpower. And then we send a couple trucks to them in the city on all of their fires. So, it's just something that helps both of our ISO to where hopefully we can get y'all's insurance rates and stuff like that down. It's really the main goal of it. But it also provides us with the additional manpower that we need since both departments are kinda limited on resources. We're not Atlanta Fire Department where you got six people coming off of one engine or one fire truck. So, that's really what it is. This is really just an update to that agreement. It's already been in place, y'all are gonna see no change with anything. It's just updating it to where me and Chief Hurley are on it. And then hopefully give us that leadway to where, when new neighborhoods come in, that me and Chief Hurley can discuss that with the nine-one-one director. And we can make sure that those streets are addressed to where we got the appropriate resources responding.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dewberry. God, where are we saying?
We're voting on it.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, all in favor, show a right hand.
Who motioned and who seconded?
I'll make the motion to approve the automatic aid agreement.
Okay.
That drew you.
Yeah. Item number six, rezoning request, Harlson County Tax Map zero-one-zero-three-dash-zero-zero-zero-nine-eight, located at twenty-four eighty Cash Town Road. The present zoning is A1. Agriculture proposed zoning is to rezone Track 1, 6.08 acres to CGB requested by Paris Pelt.
I make a motion to rezone this piece of property from A1 to CGB, the 6.08 acres as referenced by a survey done for Cash Town Metals on April the 24th.
Second.
Okay. We got a motion and a second, any more discussion? This is the original 6.08 acres that the property was sitting on to begin with, right? Okay. We got a motion and a second. All in favor, show a right hand? Motion carry. Item number seven, Resolution Ordinance to Aid Short-Term Rentals to Chapter 12 Entitled Business and Business Regulations. That's what we talked about in the work session. This is just a formality to add it to the regulations that we've already got. Adding short-term rentals and Airbnb to the regulations that we already have in place.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve, any more discussion? All in favor, show a right hand? Motion carry. Employee Health Insurance to United Healthcare for fiscal year 2025. It's just, it's something we have to go through to change insurance carriers. We're changing from Cigna over to United Healthcare.
I'll make a motion to approve United Healthcare for fiscal year 2025.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, show a right hand? Motion carry. Item number nine, Harilson County Veterans Association Request for $20,000 in funding for West Georgia Veterans Museum and Education Center. I think...
Mr. Chairman, if I could on that. Before I came to the meeting this morning, I talked, this afternoon, I talked with Avery Jackson, my partner, who has already been looking into this. And we start out from the premise that the county is not able to make donations based on the gratuities clause of the Constitution. However, we are trying to look and find a way we can craft a policy that we could bring it into line, that the county could decide to make contributions if they choose to for appropriate purposes. We haven't got that completely put together, so I would ask the county, I don't think you're prepared to vote on it right now, because if I had to tell you right now, I would tell you, you can't do it. We're trying to find a way that you can do it, but we don't have it all put together yet. So I'd ask that you hold off on making a decision on this particular item until we can give you a policy that will work.
Okay. I need a motion to put it off till the policy's in place.
Yeah, we're working on, I think Avery's working on it. And I can't tell you exactly when it will be ready, but we'll notify you when it's ready to come before the commission for a vote.
I'll make a motion that we push this item to a vote on a later date or remove it from today's agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, we got advice of counsel, we got a motion and a second to wait on the attorneys to tell us when.
We're trying to make it legal.
To make it legal, I guess that's the way to put it. All in favor, show a right hand? Motion carry. Public participation on non-agenda items. We don't have any. We need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion and a second, all in favor, show a right hand? We adjourn.